With the work session, first item on tonight's agenda is a discussion of an ordinance recommendation from the police department regarding sleeping in vehicles. This ought to be exciting. Out of doors or in non-residential zones. Chief Holligan?
Chief.
All right. How's it going?
Good. How are you, Chief?
Good.
Doesn't look like we actually aren't ready. We're listening.
The ordinance that we currently are looking at came from one of our neighboring agencies or neighboring cities where this ordinance, if we can get it passed, will deter our individuals from being able to sleep on public benches. We'll be able, not sleeping on city property and not sleeping in their vehicles. As you know, we do have our homeless individuals who are, who actually are doing this right now and they're sleeping outside the library, sleeping in vehicles. We've addressed this on multiple occasions.
Okay. When are we gonna, do we have a copy of that? Someone to look at that?
It should be in there. I didn't see it. It should be in there.
Did you guys have?
Is it not in there?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I did not bring a copy of it.
Oh, it's in here. It's in your, you do have it on your iPad.
Do you need to read it?
Can you paraphrase it? Do you know it well enough?
I do not. I do not know it well enough. In fact, I apologize. I guess I missed this on the work session on the, on that page. I had everything but that, so I did not come prepared to discuss that.
Okay. Well, I would counsel, are any of you versed enough to initiate this right now? Or do we want to table this until we had a chance to look over this ordinance?
I think probably it'd be good to look over the ordinance. I haven't been able to download it yet to, to read it. I do have just some general thoughts on it because I know that that's been an issue in several areas around the city and we've had several citizens complain at the same time trying to balance the not criminalizing his homelessness, but also not tracking them. I don't know how to-
Exactly. This is basically just so that they are not sleeping on our, you know, park benches, they're not sleeping in their vehicles at, at night and just basically having them get more residential lives, just to be able to, you know, they're, we're receiving multiple complaints on a daily basis where individuals are basically bringing everything, putting it on their park benches. I mean, it's, it's more than we can move ourselves. So, it's basically taking up residence in front of some of our city buildings.
There is a public safety aspect to it, too. I mean, I know the one guy was living in his car and had an extension cord stretched out from behind the library across the sidewalk and into the car with a fan blowing, you know.
And we, they were actually plugging into some of the city, the city buildings using the electricity and there's, I mean, there's been multiple, multiple occasions where we've had to address this.
Chief, one thing I do not see in here and read it pretty quickly was I don't see what the penalties would be for violating the law. So, if you could, you know, swing now and, you know, say the next meeting or in the next several days would be great if you could tell us what either this, this other municipality, I see which one it is in here now, has for a penalty or what you would recommend for a penalty.
Okay.
That's always an issue as well. You know, we're trying to be humane as well and so what do you do with the homeless? Do you incarcerate them? I mean, what do you do?
Which is what we're trying to prevent from doing is incarcerating because that's not really helping the situation at all.
Exactly. So, what is, what's the remedy?
Having a protocol would be something. And we want to be able to put, we want to have other resources for them to reach out. I've talked to the mayor about it and that's what we're trying to do is put together a list of resources for the homeless individuals who, I mean, there, some don't want help, but for the majority, they do. And we want to put those resources together for them.
The police department's starting to file so we can ask consistent questions so we know how to help them.
Exactly.
Because there's a history, it's not like we have a lot, but there is a history and a lot has been tried and it's good to have that point of reference to, to see what has been done and tried.
The resources are-
I feel like we ought to reach out to the faith-based community.
Absolutely.
I mean, there's family promise of Alvin County that, that serves families, families with children. There may not be a network established right now for, for just individual homeless, but I feel like that would be a resource to tap into. Right now, it seems like it's, a lot of times it's a mental health issue and it's putting it from the state, just dumping it on the police department to deal with-
That is correct. And that's what we're, we're also working with our mental health providers to, to be able to, you know, help us, where can we, where can we get the, the services that they need? How can we help them get into a program that will help them, you know, be productive citizens within, you know, within the city? We're not necessarily trying to run anybody out by no means, but we want to provide the services and to help them.
Understanding the situation, though, is key.
Yes.
What happens with those individuals? Because it's going to come up and I know that one of the more widely known instances in Fairhope is what I've been told by numerous people, including faith-based organizations, have said that one particular individual does not want help.
Correct. That is correct.
And so, what's the, what's the remedy? And this person has a lot of, they, they have a lot of stuff with them, a lot of, a lot of belongings. So, I mean, you know, what's the solution to that?
And that's what we're trying to, we're trying to find out.
Yeah.
We're trying to find out how we can help that individual move.
You know, that's why I say this law, you know, if, if we were to pass a law forbidding it and it has penalties, you know, that's where we, we keep finding ourselves and being human and not wanting to put this person in jail for violation of a law, but at the same time, like I said, allegedly, they don't want to get a job, they don't want to live with family, they don't want the help.
Well, right now, we don't have, we don't have the ordinance. We don't have violations. So, if we can move in that direction, it may help that person want to be able to get-
Encourage taking the options that are available.
Correct.
All right. Any questions on that? At least we have a heads up, we know, we know what we're talking about. When I first read that, I thought we were talking about police sleeping in their vehicles.
At first, I did see it and then I remembered, oh, yeah, we talked about that.
Maybe tired, maybe they just got off the night shift.
It is a 12-hour show.
I get really sleepy after lunch.
That may be a problem.
But I will have that put together with, with what you're asking.
It might be that one, right? Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief, for bringing this. All right. Fairhope docks miscellaneous. Lynn and Sean?
It's going to be Sean and Tom.
It's with Sean and Tom.
I pulled my miscellaneous, so they're down to one somewhere.
Okay.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Hey, Matt. Hey, Sean. So, basically, you know, Sean knows the, the traffic and the business better than, than most any of us down there and, and what's around Fly Creek and we did just adjust these rates, slip rates, a year or so ago, but he's done some tuning up on it to try to encourage some, some growth and, and it's all about, kind of all about encouraging different types of boats to use our facilities, right?
Yeah. Basically, the, the calls I've been getting, the majority of my calls, they call, they want to know what our slip fees are. I tell them and their next question immediately after that is, do you offer a yearly discount? You know, if we sign a year's lease, what's the rate then? So, I know that had always been the case at that particular marina before the city took over and then I also called around to various marinas and asked them, you know, do you guys offer a discount rate for a long-term lease? And everybody I called does. It's just, it's kind of a common thing. I've had one boat leave already that was on just inside of what they call a trailer sailor, a boat small enough that they can actually drop the mast, put it onto a trailer. If I could have offered her a discounted slip for an entire year, I very well could have kept her for the entire year because it is a pain to load and unload the boats and, you know, I want to see the marina full.
I thought our prices were really competitive.
We are competitive on a month-to-month.
Oh, okay.
But, but in this little situation he's talking about here, which is more, there's more than one, she, she doesn't use her boat throughout the winter time. So, she, instead of paying the fee, she pulls it out and parks it in the backyard or in a storage unit somewhere at a much cheaper price where if, if we could offer some sort of discount, she would just leave the thing set there in the water and just not use it till, till it got warm again.
Precisely. I've actually got one guy in the marina right now who is planning on doing exactly that. Now that the weather's starting to get cooler, he's not using his boat as much, he wants to pull it out and store it on land for the winter. If we could offer him some sort of discount, get him to pay for a full year's lease, you know, the year's lease would be paid quarterly, it would be a slightly larger deposit, all things just to encourage people to not try and break their lease and we might be able to get more boats in the marina on a year-round basis. You know, it's, we don't have a long season where boating doesn't happen, but we do have a season. I'd much rather just see those slips full year-round.
Be easier for Sean.
How much of a discount? What are you talking about here?
I'm talking about going, basically a 20% discount, going to $8 a foot if they'll sign a year's lease and they'll make their payments quarterly instead of monthly. You know, again, the paying quarterly is another thing to just encourage people to not break their lease. You know, if they've already paid three months, you know, they're much more likely to stay that three months and the next three months.
How many people do we have currently in a yearly lease that would, that would benefit, that would, that would go from 10? We'd lose 20% of the existing year-round rentals.
There is no yearly lease in place at all right now.
We don't have a single person?
When the, the new lease was written, the lease that is in place right now for everyone, it says absolutely nothing about a time limitation, it is strictly a month-to-month that's on there. Every single person that's in that marina right now can leave at any moment as long as they are paid up through the end of the month.
Lynn, I don't know if I'm correct in this, but I, I think one of the reasons for this was because we were so cheap to begin with at the, at the $10 a foot. So, I'd like to know what, you know, I know that, for instance, at Sportsman's Marina where it's, you know, $16 a foot and it goes to, if you, if you, it goes to, you know, $14, $15 a foot if you sign a, a one-year lease. But we're talking about, you know, 50% higher, almost a little more than 50% higher, 50 to 60% higher there. And so, I, I think one of the rationales was we, at 10 foot per month, $10 per foot per month was, we thought we were pretty darn competitive.
We did that also because we said we would go up after the improvements happened. So, do we have, I know that we had a comparison at one time, maybe we could do that again just to see-
Yes, yes, outdated.
Yeah, we just need to update that again.
I checked, when I was doing the check in the first place, there are annual, there are discounts for annual lease discounts.
Oh, yeah. I'm sure they all have them, but, but what is it, what is it-
We're already low.
How much is it starting at? What's it starting at and what's it ending at? I mean, you said you checked with everybody. Do you have some numbers to share with us?
I, I did not write down any numbers at the time, but I know just about everyone is doing a discount. Some of the marinas are actually doing a tiered discount rate where they offer a small discount for quarterly leases, a larger discount if you want to go a six-month lease and then an even larger discount if you go to a yearly lease. I think that's getting too complicated for what we're doing here and the size of our marina. But I'm also looking at the market of our marina here. Like you mentioned, Sportsman's Marina and this is just kind of a different market here. Those aren't the kind of boats that we're going to get in our marina. You know, this, the people with the larger boats, the fishing boats, they want to be out in the Gulf, they want to be down south. They're not going to bring their boats all the way up here. You know, the boats we have here-
Well, I was thinking they have hundreds of, you know, 20-something-foot center consoles there they keep inside and they give that same discount to, to those that are on the, on the racks inside as well. Can you give us one example maybe then? Can you give us one of what the, you know, what it is for month-to-month and one, one yearly rate for one of those that you call maybe?
I'm trying to think. If I gave you a number, I might not be accurate on it because it's, I started researching this two months ago whenever I first came in and that's when I made all my phone calls and did not write any of it down.
And I realize we, we have some shortcomings at the marina, but we are making improvements. But I, you know, $10 per foot is, is really on the very low end for a marina and $8 a foot is-
And its location and-
Is, is, is very, very low. So, you know, if we lose one or two people for the year and they, you know, I, I don't know, are we gonna, if, if everybody pays $8 per foot, are we gonna lose, are we gonna even lose more? I'd like to see the math to say we have this many people right now that, they may be month-to-month, but they keep it there year-round at $10 a foot.
Um, yeah, that's something we need to-
We're losing 20% of the revenue right off the bat.
Yeah. Would they suddenly, those who are there on the month-to-month, how many of those would sign up for an annual, do you know? That automatically throws us into it.
I'm trying to think. I would, I would think probably about six boats that we've got right now would probably want to set up for a yearly lease. But there's also, you know, one of the, one of the things about a yearly lease is, like, one of my boats that just came back whenever the city took over, he wanted to come back to our marina, came in, talked to me, decided he would bring his boat back. He was on the other side of the bay, used to be there years ago, finally brought it back and his boat's for sale. So, he's not going to want to sign a yearly lease because he doesn't know that he's going to be able to complete, you know, complete an entire year. So, it's really going to vary from boat to boat. It'd be very difficult to give a number on who would be interested in a yearly lease immediately. All I know is that every person that calls me looking to get a new slip does ask me, do we offer a yearly rate?
I think it's because we are too low on the, on the monthly and that all needs to be adjusted, honestly.
I disagree.
Do you get any pushback on the $10 a foot?
Yes. Just about anybody that does complain, yeah.
That's why we just have to compare, though. Because we're not, we're also not doing any outreach right now. I think that DAWQ, when that gets started, we're going to have a lot more outreach and publicity and awareness that it's there and available. But we haven't done anything like that right now and, anyway, we, I think it's important just to look at what everybody else is charging and structure it accordingly. We can still be competitive, but I know that we, we looked at it before, we were much lower than what everybody else was charging. Well, considering our condition. Right. We charge what we could fairly charge. But we were improving it, too.
I think once the repairs and upgrades are completed, I don't, I don't think anybody would go pull their boat out for four months to say four months. I think that you would have, hopefully, full capacity and nobody would want to take a chance on moving a boat and then losing their, their slip for the good months. And that may just take the time until we've got the, the repairs completed, but-
I think we can talk about ways that we can really get the outreach.
To where the, the docks that are still need to be repaired.
It's not like we're adding a Disney World down here. People only just start flocking in because we fixed the finger pier.
I just think it's-
Some of them can't even park in there. They've got to dug out, they're not accessible.
There's a lot of dredging issues and a lot of, you know, you know, I don't, there's not any safety issues at this point except for G-DOT, but, you know, for the most part, you know, everything's in kind of disrepair. We try to keep it as safe as possible, but-
Yeah. Right now, what I can offer is clean, I can keep the place as clean as I can and I can offer customer service and that's absolutely what I've been doing. I was standing out in the pouring rain, helping a looper come in the other night and get tied up. You know, that's, at the rates we're charging, we've got to give customer service and that's, you know, what I'm offering right now. But you're absolutely right, whenever everything gets big and bright and beautiful, hopefully we can attract some of the more expensive boats and that will want to be there year-round and will be willing to pay even more than our current $10 a foot premium. But we do have a market here. This is a, you know, this is a sailboat market. You look across, you know, across the channel from us and it's almost entirely sailboats. This is sailing heaven. You know, the guys with the center consoles and all that, you know, dry storage is one thing because, yes, dry storage is at a premium right now. There are lots of people looking for dry storage. But when you're talking about wet slips, the guys with the big center consoles that are keeping them in wet slips, this isn't where they want to be. They want to be down near the Gulf, they want to be where they fish. You know, the people that are using the Mobile Bay, especially this far north, are the people in the sailboats. I mean, that's, that's our market here. It's a beautiful place to sail and that's what most of the boats you see up here are. You know, the smaller center consoles, they want dry storage, which of course is why we're working on that as well.
Counsel, any, my, my only comment is that I'm not so sure that we're not going to lose more than we, than we gain. We just lost one or two customers, but we cut everybody else. We lose 20% of our gross revenues on the slip rentals. It, to me, that, that far outweighs, you know, losing, you know, one, one boat. How many boats? If we lose one boat, that's what percent?
I just think we, we can do a better job making sure that it's full and we can look at ways to do that. I'd like to sit down and let's talk about it.
I'd like, I'd just like to see some numbers, just some financials. Anybody else have any, anybody else, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, like, like we discussed last night, you know, 2019, we're proposing losing 232,000. Last thing to do is start, I mean, cutting rates and giving discounts when the revenue is already, I think, higher than it should be for 2019. So-
Projections, he's trying to-
Projection. So, financially, just trying to look at the big picture down there, I don't see giving discounts, like you said, just already on the low end.
You're including capital investment in those numbers, Robert?
Yeah, well, there's 197 for the dredging and then the capital purchase was just a 5,000 for the, whatever it was.
The capital improvement.
The 8,000 was taken out, 80,000 for the barge was taken out.
Sean, I don't disagree with the, I don't disagree with the premise to give a yearly, a discount for yearly rentals because that is commonly done, but, but at, at our price point, unless I saw a cost comparison, I, I feel like we're rock-bottom price, you know, right now. We've got to be the lowest, right? Aren't we?
We are comparable to the others in the immediate vicinity.
Okay. We don't have many in the immediate vicinity.
No, we do not.
You're talking about what else is there?
Yeah. I'm talking about the northern, you know, central to northern part of the Mobile Bay, which is, as I'm saying, is the, really, it's, it's a sailboat market where we're at. That's, that's the boats we get up here.
My only question is if you pay, if you're doing on a yearly, you know, if you did do a provided discount and you're doing it on a quarterly basis, what's to stop them from getting a yearly discount and paying two quarters? Are they paying the full year upfront or are they doing it quarterly?
Yeah.
And then cut out?
Well, that's one of the things, not only paying the quarterly, you're right, somebody could cut out early, but-
You have a quarterly discount and an annual discount.
Well, what I'm referring to is if, you know, if I was to get a discount, I would expect to get the, pay it all upfront.
Right.
And get the discount because I paid it all upfront. I'm not, I'm not too hesitant to give a discount and you only, you only paid it four times a year.
Yeah. Well, that was-
To be quite honest with you.
Part of doing this, I know that's, that's a very fair point. Another part of this about doing a yearly lease is we've been charging a standard $100 deposit. If you wanted to sign a yearly lease, you pay a full month's slip rent as your deposit. If you cut out early on your lease, we keep that deposit and that basically gives us an entire month where that slip is paid for and empty to try and fill it back up again and get somebody else in there. You know, it's paying it quarterly as well as the larger deposit is really all we've got to try and keep people from holding on to their lease. Getting someone to pay an entire, entire year upfront might be a possibility, but it's probably not going to happen with this market.
Right. I just, that's just crazy.
They'll do auto draft and they'll do, they'll get your credit card number and they'll hit you for a whole year if you don't stop it, you know?
Actually, I do know of one marina here that does, if you want a year's lease, you pay the entire year. You pay it right up front and that's actually one of the guys that's in my marina right now was doing that. And he is, he's looking to pull his boat out now just because he's not using it, so he doesn't want to continue to pay slip fees for a wet slip on a boat that's small enough, although a pain, but small enough to put on a trailer.
I think we can offer a lot of options, I mean, keep it simple, but offer a lot of options and payment, but we just need to get that organized before we come to work session so we can have a proposal. And I'd like to be a part of that. But we really need to look and identify all the competition and what they're doing so we can remain competitive and-
In between all the fight?
Offer, based on, you know, what we have to offer as well.
Yeah. So, my, my only, the only difference I see there really is the market of it, you know, because a lot of the other marinas that we talked to are dealing with a different market. It seems like we'd all be the same because we're so close, but it really is very different between a marina that's in the intercoastal or down on the Gulf than a marina that's way up here in Mobile Bay where we are. You know, we're here where it's shallow.
I think we're attracting, you know, short-term, but also people who've just lived right here.
Well, that, but that's why we need to see the cost comparisons because if they're going from $9 to $7, then we need to be competitive. If they're going from 12 to 10, we're already at 10. We'll say, well, we'll get your yearly discount. What's the difference? I mean, not to be mean about it, but if they're charging 14 and then they reduce it to 12 for a yearly, we're still $2 cheaper and like Robert said, you know, that marina needs some work, but as far as tying up a sailboat, the finger piers, you know, you're basically going out there and getting on your pier, just like you would at any other marina, as long as it's safe to board the boat, right? We're boaters.
Some of them are safer than others?
Pardon?
Some of them are safer than others.
Yeah. Sometimes you, sometimes boating's dangerous.
It hasn't worked, anyway.
Sean, I broke my wrist on my boat this year, so I don't know what I'm saying there.
That sounds fun.
In fact, this is the first council meeting in three months I hadn't been on a cast.
Moving on real quick, some of the slips down there that have no electricity, no water, we're proposing a rate of $5 a foot a month and these, these will probably be some of the guys who are, just want to put their boat in and keep it for their, their fishing season, whatever it be, a spring or summer or fall fishing season, just to get some use and a little bit of money out of those, out of those piers and, and offer them no amenities other than a place to tie up and board.
Where are those piers?
We've got-
That would be, mostly that we'd be talking about slips C-12 through, through C-15. They're only about a 24-foot slip and they are very shallow because of the dredging that hasn't happened. It's, it's right along the front where the big oak tree is, near the corner where it kind of dips around.
So, on the west side?
Uh, yes. Yeah, going out towards the west side where it bends outward. Those slips along there, they're very, they're very shallow, they've got a lot of tree coverage and they're difficult slips to lease out, period.
They were, I mean, that's where we just went. We just left at $5 per foot, didn't we? And went to eight.
But then when it included electricity and everything else, this is strictly-
I think we need to look at $5 electricity, too, just that cost. Because we're, we're trying to invest a little bit, too, and it's, it is going to be a few years' worth of investment before we get to it, but-
Do we do that before we really have a master plan implemented that puts, you know, what I've seen in Lynn's office is the marina, the configuration's kind of changed from all this along the wall to where it has some, some, some docks that go out towards the main channel with slips, you know, coming off. And that's when you would want to put your power and water in, I would think.
But, but at this point, we're a ways away from, from power and water and slip-
Well, are those slips occupied now?
No.
I can't hardly put anybody in there right now because of the current condition of it.
I think it makes sense to drop it to five a foot for those particular slips and just try to get somebody in there for a little while.
Well, we've had, we've had some, some people come and ask and, you know, somebody that, that just mainly fishes in the fall, they wanted to come put their boat in water to where it has some, some docks that go out towards the main channel with slips, you know, coming off. And that's when you would wanna put your power and water in, I would think.
But, but at this point, we're a ways away from, from power and water.
Well, are those slips occupied now?
No.
I can't hardly put anybody in there right now because of the current condition of it.
I think it makes sense to drop it to five a foot for those particular slips and just try to get somebody in there for a little while.
Well, we've had, we've had some, some people come and ask, and, you know, somebody that, that, that just mainly fishes in the fall, they wanted to come put their boat in water so they can get out of work, go down and climb on the boat and spend the afternoon, evening fishing, you know, versus, you know, going to a boat ramp, which, you know, the boat ramps here are not all that desirable in, in the area. If you ever, you know, wanna go fishing, there's a west wind, you know, you'll, you'll play heck with that. So, and, and that's what, that kinda brought us the idea of, we've had, we've had a couple inquiries of, you know, I like to, to go up and fish the redfish and the specks up in the delta in the fall. And I don't wanna have to launch my boat every time I go, I just wanna get out of work, get on it.
A minimum of a month, oh, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And this would also, you know, this would come with a, you know, a good bit of limitations to it. Of course, you get no electricity, you get no access to our bathrooms, you get no access to the water supplies. This is strictly, you get four poles to tie your boat to, so you don't have to launch and recover it every time you wanna go out. This would be strictly a short-term thing. And if we get to the point where we are full, and I have a couple of these $5 a foot boats, you get, you know, the money back for the remainder of the month and you gotta go, so I can put a, a full-size boat in there. It's kinda like hotels.com. An empty room makes you no money at all. I'd rather make $5 a foot off some of these basically empty slips for a very short term. You know, just for the trailer sailors that wanna enjoy the really nice fall weather or for the fishermen right now who wanna go up and fish in Fly Creek in our inlet, which is coming up right now. You know, these next two months, we're gonna get a lot of guys going in and fishing in Fly Creek for $5 a foot for a month. They can tie up in the marina in a slip that is essentially useless to me otherwise.
I think on the useless slips, absolutely. But I do think, before we go and change anything, let's come up with a plan based on putting the marketing behind it to ensure that it's the fullest it can be before we give stuff away.
Well, this is strictly temporary. I mean, done slips go away when you get a full marina.
Exactly. But we haven't really done that yet, that plan yet, and we need to do that next.
People that don't use their boat and winter move it to the $5 a foot slip with no power, no water to get their discount.
You're talking about some sailboats, you can't get sailboats in these slips. And you could do some fishing boats.
And also, a boat that contains a type 2 plumbing system will not apply to this. A boat that has a 30-amp plug on the side of it will not apply to this. This is strictly, we're talking 25 footer smaller, center consoles, trailer sailors. If they are equipped to have a real slip, then they have no business in these $5 a foot done slips. These are strictly for boats that usually spend their entire lives on a trailer, just to give them someplace where they can tie their boat up for a month or two during the prime season, while I've got the empty slips to do it. You know, and like I said, they're the first ones to go if we end up full and I need those slips for a normal slip rental.
Are you measuring them tip to tip? Are you going by what the boat says? If it says it's a Mako 22, but it's got an outboard and it sticks out there, foot, and it's got a, a anchor did on the front? I mean, how are you, you measuring these or you just?
No, we go by the manufacturer length.
By what they're advertised as, the length?
Yeah, the act, the advertised length of it, the, the measured length. Some places do that. It's generally frowned on as a practice amongst marinas to go out there and actually measure. You know, if you start dealing with a boat that's got a huge bow spread on the front of it and dingy dabbits on the back of it, and they've gotta be out in one of your huge slips and they're only paying for 28 feet, because technically the boat's only 28 feet, yeah, those you stop and say something. But whenever we're talking about these little, little center consoles and these temporary slips, get them in there, give them someplace to tie up so they don't have to trailer, and make a little bit of money off these empty slips that we can't make any money off of otherwise.
What else? What you got?
I think that was it.
We'll regroup on the, we'll bring you some marketing and some financials.
Some comparisons, the marines, the local marines, be helpful.
And if, if I might say, the, the first item on the agenda, the one where Chief was up here discussing. I mean, I, I have issues at Fair Hopeers Community Park where somebody comes in and wants to have a, this has happened numerous times, wants to have a little birthday party under the pavilion and for their six-year-old or seven-year-old, and they can't because somebody's living there. And that, you know, they're not going near the park. And they call me and complain, I go down, do what I can, call an officer. It may take a couple days, but I'm, you know, I'm all behind doing something. And I, I know that, you know, everyone deserves a place to be, but it doesn't necessarily have to be the Fair Hopeers Community Park. And I have that issue quite a bit, not, not now that it's gotten cooler, but throughout.
I just, yeah, and I, 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 I'm 100% in agreement with you, but I still, there's a, there's still a big challenge that if you get that call from the police, that there's somebody there and somebody's renting that space, what are they physically gonna do with that person at that point in time? Are they gonna?
No, they're not. But, you know, but, you know, when, when the woman calls me, 'cause she, she gets on the internet and finds Parking Rec and gives me a phone call, or the, you know, dispatchers track me down and I go over there and see what the issue is. I try to accommodate her at the other pavilion, which is out in the center of the park. But then, you know, I'm not gonna stay here with my, you know, I've got 12 kids, you know, that, that are all seven years old and we're not gonna use a splash pad as long as that's going on here.
I understand.
Okay. So I mean, I understand the issues behind it too, that's what we do with it.
You can't just load them up in the police cruiser, take them down the street, put them out with all their belongings, that's just.
Those are my personal issues that I have.
Put them to work at Parking Rec.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, discussion of RV parking during the Mardi Gras, Jennifer?
So last year, y'all passed the, this resolution to allow RVs to park on two weekends during Mardi Gras. After that time passed, I got numerous calls from the ones that were there during that stay and they were very interested in you all doing it again for the upcoming Mardi Gras season. And it was just on my calendar now. So come a month before Mardi Gras, we're not scrambling around trying to figure out what we're gonna do this year. And what I provided you was just the resolution you all passed last year. The parking rules and regulations with the Hold Harmless Agreement, the permits that were given out, as well as a listing of the income we received for those, and then calendar of when Mardi Gras parades will be this year, as well as the map that y'all decided upon last year to place everybody. While the move-in was going on and while the RVs were there, we, the police department did have some concerns, as well as Public Works, about logistics. And then the police department came back, they had other issues. Alcohol and city property is typically not allowed. How is that going, how would that be controlled or if it would be controlled? Campfires, use of city electricity was actually covered in the resolution and with the rules and the agreements. Then you had just people reserving parking spots for their friends next to the campers and RVs, and that was, I think, a problem. So that was.
Let me address some of those. It clearly states no fires.
Right.
Clearly states trash is their responsibility. It clearly states all city laws and ordinances remain in effect, so that's, that's why we have these. If the city need to enforce, if the police need to enforce those, Chief, I'd say enforce the law. They are already in place. So if somebody's breaking the law, you know, do whatever it is you do, use your police judgment, but do what you would do in any situation like that. And the fact that they're renting a spot does not relieve them, according to this, of following the law. So there are already things in, in place to address that. As far as someone reserving a parking spot for a car adjacent, now, they, they can't do that. But now, we don't have any laws about, against somebody parking your car in a parking spot downtown and, and leaving it overnight. You know, I see cars parked around here all the time. So if somebody is the first one there and they park their car in a parking spot that's adjacent, now, these RV owners, renters need to be told that they don't have any dibs on those parking spots. It, they do not, that doesn't come with it. And they get RV parking only. So you're gonna have those people that feel entitled to put their cars there. But if somebody was to say park a car in S1 or S2 where the RVs have to park parallel, then I would say, you know, move your car, you're gonna get towed.
Yeah. I, I don't think move-in, move-out was an issue for the first weekend, because move-in was at 5 o'clock on a Friday afternoon and move-out was on the Sunday. I think the problem came about was when move-in was at 2:00 PM on a Friday for the Friday evening ball or MOJ parade. That seemed to bring an issue. People had come to town for lunch and had parked in the parking spot and ended up having to get their cars towed at that point in time.
Well, did we have signs that telling them not to park there?
We did. Um, I know, I know. But that was the only.
If there's a sign that says don't park here and you park there, then I can't help you.
Logistically, that, that second weekend was the only one, I think, that caused a problem, but I just.
So we made 1,150 bucks.
Correct.
I thought it was very successful.
Is it worth it for 1,150 bucks?
That's not my call.
I'm just saying that, you know, the people parking during the day, that impacts downtown and shopping a lot more.
I think it was a great idea.
I'm just providing you all with the.
I don't know.
Or you want, or you want, walk on over there, it's not the bar. Get that tower in use.
Well, that's what they were designed to be. They were designed to be used for that. There's RV hookups there for that very purpose. When Single Tax Colony built that, they made it robust and they put, the city probably did it too, but the, the power, it was there for that purpose. And so we used it for a purpose it was designed to be. And for $1,150.
I think you can get a lot more. I mean, it's a.
Oh, maybe we can.
I mean, it's very limited and it's very good location and includes the power and everything.
I don't believe all spots were full for both weekends.
But you, yeah, you're just starting it though. It's, you're, you're gonna lose, at least on Friday, people parking there to shop, so.
Let's double the fees and see what happens.
That Friday on the second weekend was the other.
Can we pitch a tent there?
No. Doesn't say that.
Now, were we looking to tweak some of these rules or are there a problem?
That's up to you. I was just bringing the, the issues that I saw. They're over those two weekends.
Well, the items of concern, were those things that they're concerned could happen or were those things that they had to deal with last year?
Things they had to deal with last year.
Like I said, but it, it's like anything else, we have laws to address that. And they're not, they're not, they're not allowed to, to violate laws 'cause they've been in a parking spot. I would be, I would be in favor of keeping the, the rules what they are, but I would consider the changing the fees. The second date was because it was a longer period of time, right?
It's more expensive because you're, you're moving in on a Friday and you're not leaving until Tuesday.
Of course, there's two parades.
That did encompass two parades as well. We did have some that just wanted it for, and, and this may have been an issue where somebody would have had it for the first night and then another RV would have come in behind that same RV after they left for the first parade and used the same spot.
Did we say?
For the second parade.
Did we say it was non-transferable?
It is not, but you do say that there is no refunds for late arrivals or early departures. I don't know if.
Yeah, that's what we should keep it. Either it's all or none. You can stay as long as you want during that period.
We have plenty of time.
Lot of effort for 1,100 bucks.
You don't say that.
Well, I brought it to you all early enough, so we would.
Lot, lot of effort on the, the city's behalf, it seems like.
Let's double the price then.
It's tickets to a couple of days.
We could, and promote it. I mean, we didn't promote it last time.
Well, it was full though, wasn't it?
There wasn't enough time, no, it wasn't full.
It was not full?
But if y'all, y'all passed it when, it was kinda late.
Yeah, it was, it was, we, it was like, it was passed two weeks before or the end of January and we hadn't, they were.
No, it was passed like the.
The 24th.
I mean, I think people would travel.
22nd day, and the first one was on February the 2nd.
Yeah, it was, it was really fast last year. We had on the first weekend, one, two, three, four, five, seven, nine, nine of the, what, 14 spots? And the second weekend, seven, seven of them filled, so half. The second time.
Basically, until it's full, I would just jack the rates.
It was only two weeks ahead of time.
Correct.
Yeah, nobody, nobody knew about it.
Yeah, let's get it full and then decide what we need to do.
I think we can fill it.
And I don't know. Just a suggestion, I'm not having it one way or the other, I just.
You're gonna, you're gonna go from 2,000 to about a 4,000, which is.
Hey, you can put 10 there.
Basically, you know, we did all this to make sure we weren't, you know, this was kind of a temporary deal to make sure we did this and there weren't really a lot of problems.
Right.
And since we didn't hear of a lot of problems, I don't know, I mean, I'm kinda.
I didn't hear of those until.
The signs right there in front of you, you gotta be gone it too, and you're not, that's, to me, that's not a problem.
Right.
And so, you know, drunk and assoring, now that would be a problem, that type of thing. We didn't have any of that, so see, probably one way or the other.
Final thought, my final thought is we keep it and I wouldn't mind going up on the rates.
I guess I, I just look at it like, last year was a trial run and I don't have a problem with it as long as it wasn't a big hassle for the Police Department or Public Works on cleanup. And what I'm hearing is it was maybe a little bit of a hassle.
I was only there for like check-in, not really check-in, but move-in, I guess, on both weekends.
Well, if it was a hassle and you, and you, and you were paying something like $50 an hour, they got 22 hours of work they can do. We pay a lot more to a lot of, of other, you know, things that, or just for things to be nice. I mean, it's, it's not something that cost us something. The whole idea was that it's not costing us anything, at least.
Maybe if we do it, we could have a, kind of a recap from Police Department and Public Works like the week after the event. And if it does, if it was a hassle and it didn't go well, then we just scrap it and don't worry about it.
Right.
Don't even have it come up again the next year.
I think y'all produce a report after each event, don't you?
We do.
Okay, yeah, so that's just normal standard procedures for them. So they'll be able to bring that back to you after this year.
I'm not, I don't, I just don't hear any finality to this. What, what are your thoughts?
Leave it as it is.
I'd say leave it as it is and then do a follow-up.
Leave it as it is.
Do a follow-up. See what it does and, I mean, come another $400.
I, I really think we could get, I think, I mean, even if we went to 75 and 125, I mean, it would, they would pay it. I don't, I don't think money's an issue to those people in the big RVs that are, they pay sometimes $50 a night. And so $50 was for, you know, two or three days. It was a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, that's four, that's $25 a night. And then the other was Friday, Saturday, $25 a night. That's, 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 that's rock bottom.
Do you wanna do $100 a night?
No, no, I was $25 a night, I was like 50 or 40 or something.
100 and 200.
I could do 100 and 200.
I mean, it's a premium, it's an unbelievable location.
It's a premium location.
Yeah. Trust me, I know you can get a lot and promote it.
100 and 200.
I mean, we can try that and see how that works. You might have to iterate on it a few times to get it right. Listen to the mayor. Tell him, man.
It's not a lot of money if we didn't get it.
That's right, and it's not a lot lost if we don't get it.
That part is true.
You get half as many, you get still the same amount of money, but less hassle.
You'd have parking for the people who are coming.
You got half the same money and half the hassle.
And they'd be happier to have more room.
I'll just park it.
We just have to get a post out and get it on the calendar. Yeah, I'll put some on the next agenda.
Yes. Thank you, Jen.
Yeah, it's actually, it's actually, yeah, 65% on the, for the first night.
Let me tell you, they kept that, it was all, they did, nobody knew about it.
Well, I agree with it, I agree.
Put it out for bid, $2,000 for both weekends, somebody bet that whole thing and have their friends park there, write off the name.
That's not a bad idea. We have to allow drills out there and everything else.
You don't want that.
No, I know, just kidding. All right, committee updates. Jimmy? No, I know, just kidding. All right, committee updates. Um, Jimmy?
Um, yeah, we had a, uh, environmental advisory board had a meeting Friday. They didn't have a quorum. Um, have several things that they are working on. We didn't have a chance to update that. I wasn't, wasn't available for the meeting, but they are working on several different items. Um, we got a historic preservation committee meeting tomorrow morning. And then the library board is not meeting, um, the remainder of the year unless, uh, unless it's necessary just because of the scheduling around holidays. Had a lot of people that were gonna be, be missing. And, um, the library there did have, um, of course, we're going through the construction out there. So they've had some, some times they're having to shut down for several days at a time just because of the amount of work that's being done inside. And, and can't really do that around all the employees and having, having customers in there. Uh, but they were awarded a twenty thousand dollar grant, um, through federal funds, which is gonna be used to buy scanners. And basically scan and gather, uh, different photos and upload from, photos from the community to Alabama Mosaic. So, um, congratulations to the library for getting that grant.
Robert?
Uh, Bike Ped didn't have anything too, too breaking coming out of it. Uh, talking about some additional sidewalks around town. And, uh, I missed the EAC meeting, but they, uh, continuing the discussion. They wanna talk with the school board about the special tax district. So we'll see where that goes.
Okay. Kevin?
We got a harbor board tomorrow at four-thirty in the Del Shamps room, that will discuss, bring up some of these points we had today. And the personnel board will be meeting on the fifteenth at seven-thirty in the Del Shamps room, A, AM. Come here and bring a doughnut.
I haven't had any, uh, committee meetings since our last council meeting, but I will say that, um, we did have the, I'm, it's an advisory committee. Uh, the mayor and I are both on it for Hatch and they had the ribbon cutting, uh, grand opening of the facility, uh, at, at Compass Bank. And, uh, it was real nice ribbon cutting. They had a little open house. And, um, out of that, uh, one of the persons that is probably going to be an entrepreneur that's, that is, I believe, they may have already been selected. Or they're, they're looking to be selected by Hatch to, you know, get the support that they give. Was really interested, uh, I don't know what I can say publicly, that they're in the aviation business building. They have a patent for a part, uh, for an aircraft and they were looking for some space. And so, uh, the airport authority, uh, myself and Chip Groner, one of the members of the airport authority, did show this person some property on the west side of the airport. So I don't know what'll come of it, but, uh, it, it, you know, we just, we just need a spark there to get that, to get that going. So we'll see, we'll see how that goes. Department heads? Jay? Yes, please do.
No, you guys sit way out there.
You gonna start with the water tank?
Yes.
Cause I know people wanna hear that. We, we get to read it, but the public doesn't get to hear that.
Well, it's good news.
Yeah.
Finally. Uh, the last time I updated you before, yesterday, it was seventeen, seventeen percent done. Uh, they're above sixty-five now. Um, that's blasting and priming. The painting will be next. It'll go pretty fast, uh, after that. I've asked Richard if I could meet with the contractor and see if they could candy stripe one area in the top of the tank when they start painting. And if they do that, then we're gonna tell the, uh, cell phone providers that they can use that one area to go ahead and start putting in their cables. I don't expect them to, but at least it'll get the monkey off our back, so to speak. So, and I think their own schedule, uh, to get done is still December eighteenth. So that's good. You were gracious enough to give me money to repair well seven. We have ten wells. Seven is a really important one. It's a producer, uh, for well one, uh, treatment plant one, and, uh, we had a failure at that well. And, uh, we're still getting all of the reports in, but we didn't get all the pieces out of it. And there's no way to get all the pieces out of it. It came apart. We had an expert look at it in August and he thought it lasted about a year, maybe two years. It lasted about two months. And, uh, you gave us forty thousand dollars and that'll come close to covering what we need. We may have to ask you for a little bit more, uh, because of the fishing expedition. They've been there about two days trying to fish the pieces out. The well comes in a shaft, it's about two hundred feet long, so it comes out in twenty-foot sections. When it failed, it unthreaded and it fell down into the well, further into the well, and the bowls are down there. And they can't get all of it out, but they got most of it out. So we're gonna stop at that point. And, um, you know, we're gonna be okay. The, the production's not gonna change, but we did have to spend the extra money getting the pieces out. You have any questions on that?
How big is that pipe that goes in the ground?
Well, the shaft that holds the pump is an inch and a half stainless steel shaft, but, uh, it has a casing. And we had to cut all the casing out because we had to take it out piece by piece. And we put that into the proposal, uh, for the budget. What we didn't put in was the fishing expedition. We thought it would all come out, you know, at the same time, and it just didn't. And so they had to go down and run a camera down it, see what they could do, then they had to blindly fish for it at about a hundred and ninety feet deep. So the shafts came out, but the bowls, which are part of the pump, are gonna stay in there. We can't get them out. And then we'll cap it at that point and it'll still be fine. But I did want to tell you in a week or so or two weeks, I had to ask for some more money for that. Not a lot, maybe seven, maybe eight more thousand dollars hopefully. Any questions on that?
When you say cap it, what do you mean by, you know?
Well, the debris, the debris field.
You're just capping the debris?
Right. It's, it's at the very bottom. It's probably the last eight or nine feet of it. But the screens, we're only gonna lose about four feet of the screens. The screens are where the water comes through and we can pump. We've already called, Dan O'Donnell does the, um, he's the expert for us. He doesn't expect any loss. We have looked at that well during drawdowns when it's really, you know, dry and it doesn't draw down. So we have a great deal of water in that area. Any questions on that? I got one more issue. All right, uh, Minitch Court. I know that Richard spoke to you about Minitch Court. I just wanna make sure everybody's aware because I think that you're gonna hear about Minitch Court and the water in Minitch Court. And I don't want, the first time you hear about it to be from somebody other than me. We were trying to put water in sewer into Minitch Court. Uh, we don't have an easement. We thought we had an easement. We thought we were gonna get an easement. We haven't worked out an easement yet. That's where the three-story house is going in, two and a half stories. Anyway, we can't get water to them quite yet until we get that worked out. Did you hear anything from Rita? I heard she was.
She said she's still not decided yet, but.
Okay, just so.
As she was shortly.
All right, so we're all on the same page. Um, I'm sure that those good homeowners who have built that house are gonna come and, and I, I don't, I don't have an answer for them. If we don't have an easement, there's water there. There's only a three-quarter inch galvanized water line. It will not supply water to that house. Plus, the house has to be sprinkled and there's no way that that's gonna happen. So right now, all it can do is get water to the right of way, and I don't think that's gonna work well either. So that, kinda, until we get that easement, until we can work together, until you, somebody gives us easement, you know. They said their drop dead day is gonna be right after Christmas. I need a week to get that water in there. So, I'm just trying to, I know that you're gonna hear about this. I know you're gonna hear about it soon. I didn't want you to be blind inside it. You have any questions about it? Sewer's not an issue for that house. We'll have to eventually take care of sewer, but that can be down the road. But water is an issue. Domestic water.
What was the name of the court?
Minitch Court. Across from yours.
My Indian ICH.
So we can get water along the street, but we can't get water to the house?
I don't have an easement. I don't have a prescribed easement.
And it's not all their property then, right? Because they would.
There's no easement to those. They've got that Minitch Court, but the issue is the lots facing Section Street go over the, over Minitch Court. So the south property line of the south lot.
So you're just saying you'd be going through private property?
Right. And, and the water, so, so there's a couple on Minitch Court and then there's two houses behind those two lots. And the water line for, for one of them goes across the north lot on Section Street.
Right, you can see it running on top of the ground. It was temporarily done because when one of the developers came in and started clearing the lot, they ran into the water line and the sewer line. And so they stopped and put it back together until this could be resolved.
So they're trying to get an easement?
We, we, we need an easement.
Yeah.
There's an ingress egress, uh, property, uh, you know, that you can drive down and that's where I thought we could go, but.
Why, why do we have to provide the easement? Why, why?
No, no, we're asking somebody, yeah, we're asking.
We're asking private property owner to give an easement, put the utilities in there.
Right. But would the, is it, is it not incumbent upon the person building the house to have figured that out first?
I think it's, I think the story is complicated. And I think that, you know, and, and I just wanted, I don't, I don't have all the answers for you here. Because I know that, uh, the lawyer for the planning commissions, you know, Ken, I think his name's Ken Watson, is that right?
Yeah, he is.
Right. I think that he's advised us, you know, to wait for an easement. I've, I've tried to keep the homeowners informed before we're at. I'm ready to proceed, but without an easement. You know, Richard said, and I agree that we shouldn't, you know, we're just gonna make it worse. But I did want you to understand that they're probably gonna come and not be happy with all of us. I just didn't want you to hear from them first. All right?
Okay.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Good? Okay. Wayne? Saw you easing up here.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, just wanna, we, we've asked for a few minutes at the next work session to talk to you all about, um, small cell technology. It's an emerging 5G technology that the self-owning commissions are, are starting to roll out. Um, it may impact the city aesthetics. Uh, they go in the right of way and they use small tow, a series of small towers. We'd like to come and, and kind of discuss that with the council at the next work session. It's, it's an emerging technology that's not, that's, we've looked around the country. It's been handled different ways, but, uh, but basically it's, uh, it's something that we're gonna have to deal with. Um, and so we wanna come and just make a very brief presentation at the next work session and kinda talk about options for that, so.
Were people saying that's mind control and everything else that's coming?
Yeah, that too. Um, the bigger issue, the issue that we see is, is that, um, they go on the public right of way. And so you have, you'll have a series of, of poles, I think thirty to forty feet tall.
Daphne has this though.
Well, you see some of them from the, the stabilization project, the time, I mean, you have seen some of those, but this is something that's, um, it's emerging. And Jeff and Richard Johnson and I and Buford King and others have talked about this, um, and done some research about this. Um, we've been asked about it, uh, by some, one of the self-owned companies. And, um, we wanna kinda show you some of the issues that we've discovered from other parts of the country that we need to be aware of before we, before it hits us.
Have a plan, so we're defining what it looks like.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's definitely the future.
Exactly. I mean, it's.
It's coming.
It's coming and, and I think there's some ways that we, that we can deal with that. We just wanna talk to you about that and just make, make you aware of that. And maybe make some proposals as far as ways to handle that, so.
About, uh, Greeno Road, so, I mean, we're going through the visual preference survey.
Right, we, we, yeah, we've, we've, uh, the visual preference survey is still ongoing. I think the, the survey's gonna be online until the thirtieth of November, I believe. Um, we had, uh, a couple of, uh, public meetings, which were, I thought were well, were, were good. That survey is the same one that people are taking online as well. So just because you didn't come to that meeting doesn't mean that you can't take the survey, cause it's the exact same.
You can do it in under an hour. It's about, what, forty-seven questions, was it?
Yes, yes, sir. I think it's probably twenty-five, twenty, twenty, twenty-five minutes, probably. Yeah, so it's, it's quick. Um, and so once we get that, we, what we would like to do is take those results, get those feedback from the consultant. And then start, uh, looking at, uh, some ways to address some of those concerns on Greeno Road. Um, and so that will be also a series of, of recommendations we would make, uh, to amend our ordinance to try to reflect, uh, some of the desired, uh, looks that, that have been expressed and, um, and even some land use issues that may come up during that process. There has been some discussion. I know the, uh, council president mentioned the moratorium. Um, that's something that, you know, uh, and until we get that finished, that's something that probably, that may be something we should look at. It's, I think that's a policy decision. Probably need to ta, talk about it at some point. But, uh, after the thirtieth, when the survey closes, hopefully we'll get that feedback relatively soon. Um, and then start going to work on prospective amendments, uh, from that. And, uh, and so, uh, all said and done, you're probably talking about, you know, I think we said before, six to nine months to get something like that in place. So, um, but, uh, I, I think the visual preference survey was an exciting process. It's, um, that's just kinda the kicking off point. That was not a very deep dive into those things. I think as we go further along into this, a long-range planning process, we'll get much more into the fabric of, of, of specific areas and, and things like that. So that, that, I think this is just more of a high-level like and dislike just from images. And so, uh, I think as we go further along, we'll get much more detailed, um, into, uh, into the city characteristics and, and city growth. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you, Wayne.
Mr. Peterson, did you, I saw you easing this way. Did you have something? Or Mr. Johnson can go in front of you if you, if you want. Okay.
Tomorrow, we're gonna have a planning session on the lift station at Mobile Street and Fells Avenue, replacing that lift station. And what I'd like to try to do is, is bring that lift station closer, you know, where Fells dead ends into Mobile Street. It's, it's kind of on the south end of the Bluff Park.
Right.
I'd like to bring the lift station closer to the road so that when we are in, you know, maintaining the thing or we have emergency operations, that we're not having people walk between where we're parking vehicles and the lift station. I'd like to reroute the pedestrian walkway around the backside of the lift station. And, and use the, the planning that we have available along that sidewalk and just buffer the, the, um, sidewalk with landscaping on the backside. And i- if anybody's got any heartburn with that, what I'd like to do is create kind of a parallel parking space along the road for trucks that would access the station on a weekly basis to check it. And then have the, uh, enclosure be a, uh, a, uh, hopefully it'll be pretty tasteful and, you know, have a, have a fence around the station itself that would block access from any pedestrians. Right now, you can walk up to the electric panel if you wanted to. And I don't know what you would wanna do in the electric panel, but, you know, it's not the best thing in the world. And the, the access to the dry well is, is kind of open too. So, I mean, I think we need to be more secure and I think we need to have it closer to the road where we can access it easier than where it is now. Right now, we really don't have any real place to park any vehicles except out on the grass anyway, and I'd like to get away from that if we could. So if, if that sounds reasonable, y'all will submit some preliminary site plans for it.
Little site plan.
And see, see what you think about that.
Sounds good. I'd like to have a glance at it though.
Oh, absolutely. I just, I just didn't wanna get too far down a trail and it was like, well, we're not gonna do that. But thinking about long-term operation and maintenance, I'd like to be able to do something like that. And hopefully we'll be able to give you some schematic-type information at the next council meeting.
Make that spot big enough for an RV when you run it out where you'll meet.
Got sewer.
It may be big enough for an RV.
Probably advertise.
You got sewer available right now.
But anyway, if everything else is going well, I appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
We go five hundred. Maybe sewer available.
I had a feeling that was gonna come up.
Water.
Good evening. Just a couple of updates and Councilman, uh, President Varell already knows this, but just kinda grants. As you know, y'all authorized us to apply for a highway safety improvement grant for Roundabout at, uh, North Section Street at City 104 and Veterans in Senet 98. Sheri and Lee and I had a follow-up meeting with Aldott a couple of weeks ago, provided him a little bit additional information from the police department on accident, uh, data. And, uh, we left that meeting with pretty much assurances that was going to be a go. And they're, hopefully we'll have a letter of authorization as well as approval this calendar year, they said. So we're excited about that. But also the county applied for a grant to do the same at County Road thirteen and Twin Beach, and they have been awarded that grant to build Roundabout. And that's a Roundabout that's gonna benefit us, but we don't have to do a thing except landscape it when they're through, so, uh.
Where are we taking it?
Thirteen and Twin Beach, County Road forty-four. So, uh, County Road thirteen is going to be the road of Roundabouts for it's all over with. But, uh, uh, for a person that uses that route pretty regular, that, that four-way stop sometimes does get, uh, backed up, so I think that's a good location and.
It really is good. It's very dangerous there.
Yeah, and it really enhance our soccer complex and all the other things that we got going on there.
The nice thing about it is we've got the public perception that these Roundabouts are a lot better than what they perceived it to be.
I think we've won the hearts of.
And I think we won that battle pretty good.
Yeah, I think we have.
Not since they, not since the first one was built.
And, and I know that, that y'all have been very generous over the years to allow us to do a lot of studying downtown on pedestrian and traffic and safety. And, uh, one of the things that y'all expressed to us is that, well, okay, when are we gonna do something about the findings that we have? Tonight on the agenda, you do have a request for us to allow the mayor to come back with a not-to-exceed price to take, I think it's the top six recommendations and, and engineer that into a project. Uh, and that's with Lee Engineering, who has been recommended to us to negotiate. been recommended to us to negotiate with them.
We can save a little time. Can you, what are those top six? Do you know what those are?
And I did not bring that, but...
So, are they signs or are they different than that or?
Um, one, there is a brand-new mid-block pedestrian crossing basically from PD over to Pine because we have a real issue there with a, with, uh, using LED-in pavement technology light system. So, that will be aesthetically pleasing, but, but hopefully, since it's a mid-block, do that. Oh, thank you. Um...
Is that on the, uh...
Yes, scope of work. Uh, new pedestrian crosswalk mid-block on Section Street between Justice Center and Section Place, Pine Street. Uh, two pedestrian safety island bulb-outs at Delamar at Section Street intersection. Uh, design of a cobble safety strip center lane on Section Street from Fairhope Avenue to PNC Bank, Johnson Avenue. Design of pedestrian signals at the intersection of Fairhope Avenue and Section Street. Design of traffic calming elements on Fairhope Avenue westbound entering into the CBD. Design of decorative regulatory and street signage for the extensive construction. And then also, design for ADA compliance retrofit for the extensive construction. And that is a mandated, that when we do improvements in a construction area, we have to evaluate the existing pedestrian facilities for ADA compliance, so.
Okay, so this is, this is still just the engineering services for these?
To turn it into an actual project, yes, sir.
Okay. I had thought that it was going to actually be putting something into place and the only thing I knew that had been done was I, I thought it was gonna be putting in that wayfinding.
No, this is not, not to be confused with that, even though we do want to upgrade any signage related to these project elements. That's why that note is in there. Uh, so, we're excited about that. Kind of an update, and you'll see it in two weeks. Uh, I know I was very pessimistic when we opened the Rock Creek Stream Stabilization and Channel Restoration Project. It came in exceedingly over budget. You did authorize us to sit down with the engineering contractor to see if we could renegotiate. I will tell you, I'm very excited that the engineer spent some additional time, the contractor worked with us, and we've been able to reduce that price by over thirty percent. And you'll see that in two weeks. So, I was pessimistic. I'm glad I'm wrong in this case. Uh, we're much, much closer to the, uh, the budget number.
Can you negotiate something more than, than ten percent with that once you go, um, receive their bid? I thought that there was a limit on how much you could negotiate before you had to put it back out for bid.
At least according to the Code of Alabama is that when there's a singular bidder and there was a public thing, that, that you can renegotiate the price. And, and the good news is, I think what, what we stayed within the scope of is that we did not add, add any additional new quantities. We eliminated things and replaced them with quantities that were already in that bid. So, as far as the, the components that make up the new price, it is a bid component.
Well, it may be the singular bidder, you know.
That, that's the key thing.
That's the key.
Yeah. Um, citywide paving, weather has not been our friend. Every time we, they're, they're close to being finished. Really, the only thing that remains is Spring Run and Middle Street and, uh, half of the mechanic, uh, parking area. Um, they're hoping to get back on it as soon as the rain stops raining, which may be Thursday. But unfortunately, next week will also be a holiday week, so it may get pushed back another week before it's complete. And, uh, the bathroom down at, uh, at North Beach Park, the CMU masonry walls are up and out of the ground. And, uh, again, weather has not been our best friend there either. And probably a little project that just was done in-house. It was a cooperative thing. And I know y'all, y'all heard some talk about it. But, the pocket park behind the library is, is almost finished. Uh, we just gotta go in and do a little landscaping. We did repair the sculpture that was there and, and it needs to be remounted on its pedestal. But, it's really turned out really cute and, uh, it was very cost-effective for not only the Realtor Board that, that provided the grants, but I think it really has enhanced that little corner of the library back along there, which was kind of a dead space to start with. And, uh, I think the butterflies on the wall really make everything work good. But, that's kinda where we are on, on things going on. Um, for us, this week kicks off the holiday season. Uh, we have lighting the trees and, and it's just one event after another. And, and really, Public Works has a lot of support that we offer all the way through arts and crafts and a little bit beyond that. So, uh, this is a, a busy time of the year and, uh, we just appreciate all that y'all do. And, and hopefully, we're getting some things knocked out and, and getting, planning for the new budget year to, to knock out a whole bunch more. Glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Couple of questions. The LED crosswalk.
Mm-hmm.
Will that be at all the crosswalks or just a new one?
This will be the first one we introduce. Uh, we've done a lot of studying on the technology. I'm, really the only one I'm personally familiar with, if you've ever been to Pensacola Beach, they use those extensive leave out there. And they, they really do get your attention and it makes the driver aware that people are entering into. Uh, I think that this will kinda be a test bed. Uh, I would like to see this as a technology that if we're very satisfied with it, that that would be employed for mid-block, mid-block crossings throughout the central business district. And with our goal that every intersection that is signalized, it would have the traditional peg units because that makes sense, because they work with the signalization timing. Uh, these, uh, the, the, these units will have a bollard that has a push button on it. And as soon as the, the pedestrian pushes it, it, it's, lights up the crossing to warn motorists that someone is getting ready to enter into the pedestrian crossing. And they're really a, it's a, it's, I think it's a lot less offensive than the flashing beacons that are on the post on ea, each side. And, um, the, the durability, at least reading the industry information is really good. And it's a relatively low-cost, um, system.
Next question, that roundabout at Veterans 104, Section Main, whatever. Is there gonna be a temporary, or is that whole intersection gonna be shut down during that construction?
As you know, uh, Veteran, uh, Volker did the original designs, uh, back in two thousand eight and we're staying with them at request of the state and by approval of y'all because they've done about sixty, seventy percent of the work already. Uh, even though we're trying not to count our chickens, our eggs before the chickens hatch, we've already had a discussion about how are we in the, uh, final design documents, wanting to dictate how we maximize that that, that intersection stays, stays operable through construction. Um, and, and the, just to kinda let you know the thinking, we already know that the good news is the Veterans leg can be shut off and there's really no penalty because either you just, if you're on ninety-eight, you come down to one oh four and you take your right then. Uh, or if you're heading out, you go out one oh four and you take your left or your, your right at that point in time. Uh, but, that T-intersection that remains has to, the, the, it needs to stay open, even if it's on temporary surfaces and things like that. Because when you start thinking about detours and if you look at Palenta or even Gafer, you're, you would be dumping a lot of traffic into a residential area and we just don't wanna do that. So, that is going to be part of the scope of work is that, you know, uh, and it, and it can be done. I, I will tell you, at thirteen and sixty-four, which is a heavily traveled intersection.
Right.
Three legs of that intersection remained open ninety-five percent of the construction time. And really, the only time it was not open is when they were actually putting asphalt down on the roundabout and getting it, getting it ready for traffic. So, uh, I think we're gonna have to do that. Uh, it's only, that's the only responsible thing to do. And, and the bidding contractor's gonna know that's gonna be something they're gonna have to include in their price to make sure that they can keep traffic moving, at least in that T-intersection. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard. Is there anybody else? Any other department heads?
I just want to add, I may have confused, um, there's six projects going on downtown that Richard was just talking about. Jack, I think maybe I spoke with you at the visual preference about this, but, um, those are the recommendations out of the PL study and prior to that, the Dan Burden study. And now, the engineering, after that's done, then our, our guys will implement it. So, I thi, I don't remember the conversation. I may have said that that was including materials? Is that right?
I thought you'd said signs.
Signs, yeah, yeah. Maybe what I, what I meant to say was it was part of that wayfinding study, the sign study. So, I just wanted to clear that.
No, no problem.
Okay.
Alright, council, let's go ahead. Uh, I wanna make a note of just a couple of real quick things. We've got a few minutes, uh, as if the agenda is not long enough, but, trust me, about fifteen or, or eighteen of those are gonna be pretty quick because they're already, uh, budgeted items, uh, community development, uh, items that just need final approval. Um, missing from the agenda, so I'll ask for a motion at the beginning of the meeting, is an executive session, which I found out about today to discuss some pending litigation. Um, and it's something that you are all aware of. It's not, it's not new litigation. It's something you know of. But, I was asked by a city attorney to call that tonight. Um, there's a resolution to add a check signer. Um, there is a resolution to make an improvement to the, uh, water distribution system on Fairhope Avenue, twenty-one thousand seven fifty. That's to go from a four-inch main to an eight-inch main. And then there is, uh, a budget resolution to, um, adopt two of the final three parts of the budget that weren't adopted, which would just leave us with one small portion, uh, to go through. So, uh, any questions about, oh, and that's the rec department, uh, which would include golf and Fairhope docks. And there was no change to, to anything that was submitted in the, uh, what, a quote, uh, October the eighth. Uh, mayor had submitted us an edited budget, our portions of it, on October the eighth. And so, uh, there were no changes recommended to that. And then also, the Public Works Department, uh, and there were no changes recommended to that that were submitted. But, that'll just about wrap it up. Just, it was that close.
What's the one remaining portion?
It is the general, uh, it's the general budget, which sounds big. It's, it's, it's just, it's kinda the catch, every, catch-all. Uh, the, the one, you know, question that we'll have is that, uh, I wanna know a little bit more about the sales tax, the, the half a cent, where that's going. Is that just going to operate the government? Um, I could have probably picked on some of the revenue projections, but they're gonna be what they're gonna be in their, you know, their, their estimates. Uh, I think that they might be a little bit, um, non-conservative. I think that they may be overestimated, but I didn't have a problem with the spending on that. So, and that's the part that, you know, you can cut out and the revenue's gonna be what it is. Um, if we have a surplus at the end of the year, which we should have, we should take care of some of those, you know, I don't wanna nickel and dime the revenue, but, but I could have nickel and dimed it some. I, I think that, um, next year, we probably oughta start looking a little more at list, list-based revenues unless we can have a good indicator like the, the, um, tax assessor's office says, no, this is what you're gonna collect. And that's usually a pretty good estimate. But, some of the others are, I think, maybe a little optimistic. And I wanna, I'll, I'll give you an example. I won't pick on anybody, but I thought golf clubhouse revenues are too high, but I didn't have anything to pick on with the spending. So, I didn't really wanna pick on, on the revenues. I don't know that the improvements out there are gonna increase our sales that much, but what do you do?
When editing the budget, the, the revenue really isn't, you know, the approval is the spending, so.
And that's why, and that's why I didn't edit any of that. But, I just, uh, the only reason I say that is because if we fall short of revenue projections by five, six, seven hundred thousand dollars, you go, okay, well, and you're spending everything, where are you gonna take that money from to pay for the, the, the gap in revenue?
Well, we, we've always taken from utilities and this is the lowest we've ever had for transfers from utilities. So, it's, it's a good, it's a good...
Just making y'all aware that that, if we don't meet revenue projections, we may have to, to do that. And then, then we've got the part of, we're negotiating for some land for the, for the rec department. We are in the process of purchasing the K-1 Center and I just kinda wanna give that a good once-over, the what-ifs. What if we don't get the grant, uh, through Hatch to offset eighty percent of the cost of that purchase and then eighty percent of the cost of the revenue, the renovation of that facility? You know, there's some, there's some still, there's some what-ifs out there.
Well, back to the half-cent sales tax. I mean, this is going, this is what is supposed to fund the rainy day fund that's fully funded, correct?
It's fully funded. No, there's one percent that goes to that.
Okay, this is the half percent that's...
Right. That goes to...
That no longer happens.
Yeah. Well, no, because we, 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 because it's fully funded. The half percent that I'm talking about was to go to additional debt reduction.
Right, okay, that's, that's it.
And that, that's my concern, that if we use it for operating the government and next year, we decide to reduce additional debt, you know, some of the spending is, is permanent.
And this year, there's nothing that we can eliminate as far as in debt that's, uh...
Well, I have in the budget the amount that we're gonna pay towards debt to pay it off in two years.
Well, that half a penny is about two million dollars, one point seven five to two million dollars. And we're gonna be paying off an additional, I think it's about four hundred and sixty thousand. So, there's really about one point three to, um, you know, one and a half million dollars that is going to the general fund. That concerns me. I'm okay with that this year, but next year, we'll probably have to watch our spending a lot more.
If we don't amend the ordinance, I mean, I guess...
Well, that ordinance has to be amended on the, that's another reason why the delay on that one last little thing, 'cause that ordinance has to be temporarily suspended to pass the budget. Are we in violation of the ordinance? That's good.
Or just look at making it an annual, I mean, I think it just should be part of the budget. I don't think you have to have an ordinance to make it part of the budget. The goal is for the city to be self-sufficient and not relying on utility transfers. In order to do that, we have to take care of our own expenses. And when you're just stockpiling cash, when we have plenty of money in our, in our reserves, you just, you change accordingly.
Well, but that, but that half penny was paying off additional debt and that was not stockpiling money. That's saving interest payments.
Oh, well, it has been stockpiling money because we haven't had, for the last two years, the additional debt to pay. And then the other twenty-five percent was going to capital purchases when that exceeded the actual capital purchases we were making. So, it's just, I think we're in a, a different time now.
That's true, but if, I'm still, if you grow the government so much that, then that, if you don't need to retire additional debt, that quarter percent of our sales, twenty-five percent of our sales tax or half a cent, has been diverted to capital projects. And that's two million dollars that you don't have to go to, that you don't have to go to capital projects that, which is what makes, you know, that's kinda the icing on the cake. You know, two, three million dollars a year is the icing on the cake in Fairhope. That's, well, that's what makes our streets nicer and, uh, everything that, that we enjoy about it. It's just a thought, just a thought. Okay, let's go ahead and adjourn. We're already running into the next meeting.